At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, May 14th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting to order. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is roll call. Althoff. Sharnell. Daniels.
You.
Hemma.
Here.
D. Lindell.
Here.
I'm D.
And G. Lindell.
G. Lindell.
So they're both here, right?
We're here.
Alright, that's good. And Pid here. That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I second it.
I've got a motion by...
G. Lindell.
G. Lindell. And a second by Mr. Hemma, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes from the March 12th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting.
I'd like to make a comment. It says in the minutes that I noted that the street reconstruction project is planned and they voted to go forward. That is not true. I said, "The council made to go and get bids, it's not approved." That should be corrected.
Anything else on the minutes? With the exception of that, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve them then.
Second the motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Althoff and a second by Mr. Daniels. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone. Before speaking, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. That... It sounds like everyone is here for the public hearing. So we'll move on there. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for their preliminary plat, O'Gorman.
Okay, I'll just give a brief recap on this. Mr. O'Gorman has proposed and submitted a preliminary plat to replat some undeveloped land he owns across from City Hall here, over by the railroad tracks. The lots were previously platted in the St. Clair's Terre Haute addition, as well as the Goodhue addition. They're kind of on the edge there. And because of the location of the property, the configuration of the existing lots, the existing streets, railroads, et cetera, there's a few variances in conditional use permits that need to go along with this. So just a recap on those. One variance needed to comply with the minimum block length in our subdivision ordinance. The proposed platted lots are going to not meet that minimum length of 400 feet. This is due to the small size of the existing lot and plating it in the most logical way. A conditional use permit to allow the lots not to have frontage on public streets. The plan is for the alleyways to serve these properties. The existing alleys are proposed to be vacated tomorrow night at the city council meeting. And if they are vacated, the plan is to have alleyways where the lots are then fronted on those and have access from the private alleyways. Which brings us to the third conditional use permit, to have private streets that are not owned by the city. The streets would be owned, maintained, and everything else by a homeowners association to be established by the developer, once that all goes through. So, we have got, we have two motions that we would need to make tonight. One to approve the preliminary plat itself, and one to approve those variances in conditional use permits that I just mentioned. Mr. O'Gorman is here to answer any questions, and that's all I have.
Well, we've got four people sitting in the audience. Two of them said they were here for the public hearing. Does the public have any input on... Okay. Why don't you... yeah, why not?
We are... hi, first of all, we're Rick and Becky Youngmark. We bought Aaron O'Gorman's house, we're at 810 Fifth Street North. So everything he's proposing is in front of us. Our first concern is too many houses in that really small area. Our second concern is the fact that we may have a house built in front of us. And is that going to land lock our property? We have a camper, we access the back part of our property a lot from the side. Does that mean that we aren't going to be able to access that anymore? And then the roads are a whole nother issue. But those are our main concerns. That's a tight area, and to have that many houses in there. And of course, our concern is that there's going to be a whole house right in front of us. And how is that going to affect us? And I guess I didn't know about the homeowners association. That's a whole new ballgame, because we'll be totally separate. And so I don't know how all that's going to work with us, being private owners. So, those are my concerns. My husband agrees, so...
Thank you for listening.
So, question. So these are listed as alleys, are they standard width for emergency equipment and emergency access on there, babe? How you doing?
Getting older. Those are platted alleys, they're 16 feet wide. My intention is to make them 24 feet wide.
And what does the... What do we need for emergency equipment to come in and out of there?
No idea.
We've got something on that.
As far as I know, the platted alleys, the... Which, how do I say this? The maximum or minimum width is 16 feet.
16?
And that's what they're plating, no?
Okay, good. Are there going to be gutters, or are they going to...
My plan is to put curb and gutter and blacktop there, yes. But I may not own it.
What's that?
I may not own it. Because it's for sale.
Yeah, I got, I got.
So, so what I'm saying, Bruce, is I don't intend on developing it.
Oh, I see.
I intend on selling it.
Okay.
I'm going to put sewer and water in it, and... I don't know. You can buy it today, I guess. So, I don't have the final answer to all that. As to Youngmarks, there's a 20-foot easement that goes to my son's house that was... Which I lobbed off and did...
Yeah.
Probably about 15 years ago.
Yeah.
And I can sympathize with Youngmarks, because, you know, I don't mind that they're out there parking on my property, and I don't mind that they haul their camper across or park their camper there. I don't care.
But it's not always going to be yours.
It's just not going to be mine.
So the intent is, this is a marketing...
Correct.
...plan, and you, and, but you want to market it with the idea that the city has approved it, in this configuration, is that correct?
Well, this is what I'm going to plat. There's a problem there. There used to be two houses there.
Yeah.
Okay, you're old enough to remember that.
Yeah.
And so what happened was, when they built this building, they needed to put sewer here, they took the sewer that away. That alley that sits there is not where the alley belongs. But the sewer is centered in the alley, and then it went around the house. And then back. So I have to straighten that sewer out. This sewer, from right here. I have to straighten that out, put it in the alley.
Uh huh.
Okay? So it's quite different. I had my wife there yesterday, she didn't understand it, but it's pretty, it's pretty simple. It's just very confusing, because the alley for 100 years has been in the wrong spot.
So, so there is not a sewer or water in that area at this point?
Yes, there is.
There is, but it's out of alignment with...
It's...
It's all over.
Yeah, yeah. But there is not water there. So I'm bringing water from north side of the Car Wash, on Dakota Street.
Yeah.
Down that platted alley. And then straightening out the sewer.
I see what you're, I see what you're doing, yeah.
I mean, it's comparable to what, you know, Van Gilder did 30 years ago up to Welk or Riddymix. I mean, it's the same. I'm just saying that it's the same type of situation that...
Yeah.
That's...
Okay, I think I've answered my question, yeah.
And as for Youngmarks, I mean, there's, there's... There should still be, I would guess, as long as everybody's neighborly, ample room. I mean, there's, there's room there on the railroad right of way. That's usable land that apparently the railroad doesn't care. There's been a gravel easement in there for as old as that house is, it's got to be 100 years.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, doesn't cringe on the railroad any, but there's, there's still going to be a pathway along the railroad to get to the back of their house.
Right, so, and you're building alleys, and are you building it?
Building streets.
You're building the streets.
I'm building streets in lieu of the alleys.
Gotcha.
Okay, but, but, but they're going to be, they're not going to be city streets, they're going to be private streets.
Right, I got you. And then, the idea is that you're not going to develop it, you're just going to have it ready to go like that?
I'm not building anything.
There's the package, here you go, right.
So far...
So far, gotcha.
Yeah, that may change too. I, I mean, I, but I hope not. I'm getting tired.
So is Youngmarks a lot, is that the number one?
No.
No.
Their, or their, their lot is right in here?
Further to the right.
It's over here, isn't it?
Right here.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's that one, right?
This is north, so...
Right after those traps there.
And so, there's an easement right through there.
I don't know which way you've got yours oriented.
Okay.
North.
Yeah, that's right.
This is the Car Wash. Car Wash, right?
So what is the, what is the city's obligation? What's the city's obligation for them to have access to their home?
There is a 20-foot easement, it is prescribed or described, or whatever they call that.
Yeah. And that's enough room? Or that's not enough room to get in and out of there?
20 feet wide.
Yeah.
The alley's 16.
I hear you.
Yep, so that's okay.
Huh?
That's okay. It's all good.
What the minimum was.
Yep.
What is the minimum?
16.
16. What you stated earlier. What about that house that's there now, that just going to stay for a while, or...
Hannah's?
Yeah, that going away?
Nope.
Stay in there?
Stay in there. Going to hook up city water. It does not have city water, has a well and city sewer.
So this new proposal of the city water is going to come down on the backside of what used to be the Car Wash?
Correct.
Yeah, and then shoot straight south?
Correct.
You're going to sell it all in one package, or individually, or, you don't know?
Don't know. I've been moving a little ground out there, and I had a couple people stop already, so...
Yeah.
Things are moving, I know that, but...
Yeah.
Had a couple people inquire. But I don't have any money in this hand yet.
There's a lot of that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You may allow to ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. O'Gorman was talking about a 20-foot property easement. I just want to get clarification, because I understood it was 30 feet. Do you know if it's 20 feet or 30? We do, yep.
I'm sure it's 20, but I may be mistaken, but I'm, I'm quite sure it's 20.
When we came down and talked to Samantha last week, I thought you said 30 feet. So that's why I wanted clarification.
I'm not 100% sure on that, without seeing your description.
We have called, we're having a survey out for our own purposes, just so that we know for sure where everything's supposed to be. So we do have the plat from the sale of the house, but we just want to remeasure and make sure everything's accurate. So... But I would like to know if it's 20 feet or 30 feet, because 10 feet can make a big difference. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Staff recommends approval of the variance?
Yes. Yep, all variances, conditional use permits, and a preliminary plat.
Yeah, it looks like it's two separate resolutions, or is there more?
Two, two separate resolutions, yep.
Looks like it's resolution number 2018-1, that's for the preliminary plat.
Do we want to close the public hearing?
Is there any other comments or anything? Alright, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. And... That brings us to discussion item, preliminary plat. Looks like it should be preliminary plat, and then also the variance in conditional use permits.
Yes, yep, it's, I lumped it all together into one.
Gotcha. But it's still two separate motions.
Yes.
Alright. Do I have a motion on resolution number 2018-1?
Make a motion? 2000-1, you said?
Yep.
Make a motion. To approve that? I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Mr. Hemma, and a second by Mr. Althoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to resolution number 2018-2. This is in regards to the variance in conditional use permits required. That were exhibits A, B, and C.
Which one are you into?
Resolution number 2018-2. That's the variance in conditional use permits.
Find that one? I looked at it earlier.
Staff also recommends...
Yes, staff recommends approval. Yes, yep.
And I'll second that.
Who's, who did the first?
I don't think so.
No, I just asked a question.
I'll make a motion.
I will.
I'll make a motion, move it on.
Alright, then Hemma, we've got a motion by Hemma, and a second by...
Lindell, I will second it.
Or G. or D. Lindell? G. Lindell.
Got it.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And that would bring us to the discussion on signage, then, correct?
Correct. Looking, looking for some suggestions, ideas, from the commission with regards to a little bit of a sign dilemma. You've all heard that we have some new roundabouts in town?
Where?
You've all heard. You've all heard that with those new roundabouts, there's been some ongoing concerns by the business community in particular, as well as the public trying to get to those businesses, particularly on the west side, of confusion coming off of the new roundabouts to County 24, north on 63rd, then trying to get back to the east to the frontage road businesses or 64th Avenue. And recently, Sam and I have heard, again, from primarily the west side property owners, looking for a solution. And if you look at, there's a colored map in your packet, I won't put it on the overhead, because it just becomes too dark. But if you look at the colored, colored map, I'll kind of explain kind of some of the jurisdictional challenges we have here, and just some of the ideas that have been shared with us from the owners or businesses for signage. You're all familiar with the westernmost roundabout coming off of County 24. On the graphic that I prepared, there's an S, which designates an area where sign, a signage could be placed. This signage is referred to in the statement of the property owners about something that's been talked about. And it gets a little complicated, but jurisdictionally, that westernmost roundabout, and then the easternmost roundabout, are under the jurisdiction of Goodhue County, not Mendot. Mendot would not allow any signage on the interior circle of a roundabout, they just wouldn't do it. However, because it's been turned back to Goodhue County, we've been in conversation with Greg Isaacson, at the urging of property owners in the community, to say, "Well, what if we proposed some type of signage to be placed within the interior circle?" It's not something that's never happened, it hasn't happened here, but other communities have, where there's county jurisdiction, have been allowed to place welcome signs, different types of signage landscaping in the roundabouts. So we've talked about that, and after a long, long period of time, we received word from Greg Isaacson that Goodhue County would be willing to work with us for allowing, permitting a sign to be placed in that location. So we're now talking with the Grove Canyon Falls Committee and others about some ideas about what the message might be, what they might look like. But there's nothing before us tonight with regards to a sign in that location, other than the property owners on the west side have mentioned that in their, in their statement. So I think at some point, there could be signage within that western and probably the easternmost roundabout, but I don't have verbiage, I don't have a design, I don't have anything approved at this point. But at some point, there could be non, probably non-typical highway signage in that, in that roundabout. Going north on 63rd Avenue up to 320th Street, I've got another S there, and that's the location where the property owners have really strongly said they really would like to see some signage there, because too often, the public, when they do find, if they find their place of business, the caravan, the Dairy Queen, Strike Tool, Rhinos, when they were open, that they heard from people coming to their businesses that they were confused. They came off of 52, they saw the frontage road on 52, they got on 63rd, and became disoriented, became lost, became uncertain about how to get from 63rd Avenue to the frontage road businesses. So we've got a proposal, and you've got another idea here, frontage road businesses, which was actually a sign that was allowed for a while during the construction and following the construction of 52.
By the state?
No. By no one, really. It kind of looked the other way. I enforced based on complaint, that's, that's...
Very good.
Yeah, okay. So that had been up, but then due to weather and some other things, it was removed. But they're asking that something like this, if not this sign, be placed again, or allowed to be placed at the intersection of 320th, 20th Street and 63rd. The problem with that location is, it's not in the city of Canyon Falls. So, we don't have the ability to approve a permit request for signage at that location. It's actually located within Goodhue County jurisdiction, and/or, depending on the location, and/or Canyon Falls Township. So Sam's been working with Goodhue County to let me know what the rules would be from the county's perspective to allow signage in that location. And suffice it to say, that something like this is not going to be allowed where it was placed before, and it's probably not going to be allowed now, without some type of variance approval by the county. Alternatively, the county has said, if we collectively asked Canyon Falls Township for permission to place a sign in their right-of-way on 320th and 63rd, if they would approve it, Canyon Falls Township, we wouldn't be required to get a variance from Goodhue County, which would be helpful. So, there's some jurisdictional challenges. It's, I don't know that there's a perfect solution. I don't know that there's a consensus of what a sign should say, how big it should be, where it's going to be placed. But at this point, I told the property owners on the, on the west side that I'm going to bring it to the Planning Commission, you folks tonight, and see if there's any suggestions, any ideas that might help all of us kind of move forward with this. Until it's in the city of Canyon Falls, there's nothing the Planning Commission can do, there's nothing I can do, nothing Sam can do, the council can do for the property owners. But if we get some input, some support from city folks, I think it's going to be a little bit easier to discuss and maybe persuade either Goodhue County or Canyon Falls Township, that maybe some type of signage with maybe a message exactly like this should be allowed at that location. I don't think there's a, there's a pull-off-the-shelf highway sign, traffic sign that fits. And I guess the more I've heard from the property owners on the west side, the more I've maybe come to agree with them, that if this is what you all think, you're hearing it from the buying public, not me, but if this is all what you're thinking, maybe we should at least run it up the flagpole, get some feedback from the Planning Commission, some others, and see what folks are thinking. But I just know that there's not a pull-off-the-shelf solution for this kind of signage. But I don't know what you've heard, what you've experienced yourself, when you're going, you know, over onto the west side, up 63rd, and I mean, obviously you all know where the frontage road businesses are, you've visited them, you know how to get there. But any ideas that you have in terms of what maybe we should be pursuing as a solution, or at least something that would help solve this issue?
Have the property owners, or the business owners approached the townships yet?
Not yet.
So they need to do that first.
Pretty good place to start.
And then they need to get together and see what kind of signage would work for them as a group. You only want one sign, you don't want 10 different ones. I mean, it doesn't want to look like a, you know, something you'd see on the way to South Dakota, stop at...
Yeah, and this one too, Bruce, I mean, with the letter that Cheryl Bauer wrote on behalf of the caravan and the property owners, and then you see the, I don't want to call it a petition, but it's obviously signatures of affected business. And they, they seem to feel, what's been represented to me, that this notion of frontage road businesses, or that message, maybe, maybe it's this word, maybe words, maybe it's something else, but they seem to think that the folks that are coming off of the west roundabout, going north on 63rd, when they see this at 320th, they say, "Oh yeah, that's, that's help." But again, it's not a standard sign, and if Canyon Falls Township was going, was going to approve it, I'm sure they'd have some safety issues and some construction issues, some other things to work through. But, but if you kind of think that something like this works, we can certainly continue to move that through the process, and what Township thinks as well.
But the ultimate authority is the county. To approve this, to approve the signage.
Depending, unless Canyon Falls Township says it's their right-of-way, and they say within...
So they can take over and say...
They, yep, they could take over, and they might. They could take over and say that in this area to the, to the east, or to the right of where I've got that S.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit of right-of-way there.
Yeah, and anything to keep it away from the county a little bit, too. Township would be okay with that.
And again, it's going to be visibility, I mean, we want safety there too, because you don't want to be able to have a signage obstructing visions, all that kind of stuff. So it gets a little bit tricky, but county has said, if Township says it's okay, they're not going to worry about a variance. And their, their provisions without a variance don't work at all. And to follow the standards doesn't get these folks anywhere close to a, a solution that they would feel comfortable with, so...
So they need to present a solution to the township and see if they can do a variance on it.
Right.
That's the simplest thing.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me that if you're southbound on 52, you can have a visual, so you know that it's over there. But when you're coming northbound on 52, you have no idea those places are over there until you're well into Cannon Falls.
Yep.
So is there any positioning along that ramp? How far out does the DOT?
Great question, Mike, we can't, you, you may not have noticed, but within the last several months, MinDOT did add for northbound and southbound exiting traffic off of 52, they did add a sign on both ramps, and they're, they're diagrammatic signs, so they're the ones that, you know...
Yep.
So, so they put that on and that may have helped some, because we didn't have that before. But MinDOT won't allow any further signage between the two roundabouts or off the exit ramps, different from what's there today. They agreed, MinDOT, they agreed to pay for and install those two signs as kind of a way to help respond to the concerns of the business owners. And my hunch is that it has helped some, that's better with those two new signs than without them. But we have so much signage up around the, the roundabouts that I think MinDOT rightfully so has said, you know, we, we can't sign for every person who's ever gotten lost or has got a complaint. But I think again, from the property owner's perspective, they're willing to allow the folks to get off of 52 or they're, or they're comfortable allowing the folks to get off of 52, take the existing signage and get east and west. Still hoping that at some point, there's a, there's a sign with a, with a, with a message placed in both the west and east, easternmost roundabouts, that will help.
So the DOT won't put up something that specifically says DQ Grand Hotel, like I see so many times...
They buy logo signs, if, if the businesses pay for it, certain, certain, certain businesses, not all, can buy a logo sign. They pay for that. And it, and it's not just a little bit of money.
No.
Yep. So, but they won't deviate from that, Mike.
Right, right, but they will do so.
This would never be approved by MinDOT, ever, ever.
No. Or the county, or probably the township.
Right. And again, as I said to the commission, if, if the, if these properties are annexed to the city, which is certainly possible, I mean, we extended utilities out into the township over to 63rd in conjunction with the project. So if Diane Logue's property, and I think the Petersons own this one now, if those were annexed into the city, became our jurisdiction, as I shared with the commission, we have in our ordinance's language that would, would allow the council to do something like this. We don't have jurisdiction.
Is there a reason why they blocked the road, the frontage road off at Old County 24?
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
There's, they, they blocked, the problem that people have is they get on 63rd and they go down to Old 24 and we go right and we end up at a dead end. And all that road needs to do is connect back to the frontage road and so they drive two extra blocks, they're happy because now we got a roundabout that we can actually use, see? We can round about the whole...
You make a loop around by the motel, right?
Yeah, but they can't, so they go down there and they go, well, we can't get there from here. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so why is it blocked off?
Well, any of those...
Well, it got, it, it used to connect.
Is that still township? Is that, is that in the city limits there at the end, by the motel?
Yeah, sit, but...
Well, it's, it's off your map.
It's older than yellow, yeah, it's off, what he's talking about, off the map.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Who owns the property east of 63rd and south of 320th? The blacked-out area.
That's Peterson's.
That's Peterson's.
Peterson's, this one?
Yes, right there.
Yep.
I see your point, making, making a loop, yeah.
But you could, they, if they allowed it, you could put a sign up there of any shape or size, correct?
No, because it's back, I'm pointing at Sam for no good reasons, other than she also works for the county. It's Sam's fault, no. So we would still need, is it 45 feet? I think we need to be 45 feet, it's not on the building.
From the property lines.
From the property lines.
Is the property line considered the center of the road, or...
No.
Okay.
No, no. Yeah, when MinDOT bought their right-of-way, they platted it, so yeah, it's, it's no longer center of the road. So it, it would move any signage under the county regulations without a variance, it would move signage further away from the intersection. Unless it's on a building. And then there's a little bit different opportunity, so...
And they put up billboard signs just for like the weekend or something, or special events, or...
Some people do, yeah.
That's no big deal, I mean garage sale? Permanent garage sale?
Maybe it's, maybe the suggestion is working with the township and, I mean, I presume that you're all supportive of, you know, trying to find a solution here, I think that's important at the very least, that you understand that it's, there's no easy solution that's going to meet either city regulations, county regulations, or township regulations. And township, the town board may say, you know, we're really not comfortable putting a, a sign like this in our right-of-way. They could very easily say that.
But they haven't been approached.
They have, they have not been asked yet, no.
So we got to find out.
Well, if you think of anything else, as you're out driving around, let Sam or I know, because it's, I could say, it's, it's been, it's, it's been several years of conversation and we're, we're at the point now where I think we got to maybe try to do something to help.
What's this note at the bottom then? Sign, the sign code for the Cannon Falls would either need to be amended to allow the proposed signage to be permitted or might be allowed? Is, is this something we're discussing right now?
No, if, if we were going to do that, if it were brought into the city.
Alright, okay, that's what you were explaining, okay.
So that's the discussion on signage. There's another discussion item on here, a support application to Blandon Broadband Communities Program?
Looking for any questions, comments, and hopefully support from the commission. The Economic Development Authority considered a program sponsored by and funded by the Blandon Foundation pertaining to broadband, not constructing broadband, but really to, to promote the use of broadband in a community, not just for planning and economic development, but for all the ways that broadband can be used throughout the world. There's been 36 cities in the last, I think it's 10 years, that have participated in this program and all of them that we've checked with have been very happy with the results and felt that Blandon's technical assistance and their grant money really helped them move forward in a variety of ways. So the Economic Development Authority talked about this last week, had a representative, representative of the program at the, at the meeting, as well as Dan Pecorina, the CEO of Hiawatha Broadband, who's also been working with us on this program. And the EDA said, yes, we need to, to try to put together an application, there's not a great deal of time left to do that. But they asked myself, and I've asked Sam and a few others to assist me with this, that we would move forward, talk to various people through the community to see, what are people thinking about broadband in the community, good, bad, and different? Are there some applications with, with the use of broadband that maybe we should be considering and, and, and analyzing? And the Blandon program does that. We would apply for this particular program and if awarded, there would be technical assistance and grant dollars available over the next two years. The technical assistance would be to facilitate a conversation in Cannon Falls to say, what, what are the needs of broadband? And you saw in the PowerPoint presentation, this, this intelligent community approach. You can kind of see the questions that are being asked here, but it's, it's a, it's a forum, it's a format that's promoted and used successfully by Blandon previously to bring community interest together, to talk about concerns, opportunities, ideas for the use of broadband. Prioritize those, those needs and opportunities. And once they've been prioritized, then seek funding from Blandon through their grant program to actually help pay for those things. So first and foremost, it's a planning program, second of all, it's an implementation program. And as we've talked about it on, at the EDA level, as I've talked about this with the Chamber, Chamber Board, as we've talked about this with the Grow Cannon Falls Group, as I've talked with, with about just our different employers in town and workforce issues, everybody's kind of said, not just under the Blandon program, but as long as I've been here, that yeah, we really, we really should take a much closer look. We're working on a data center development through the Economic Development Authority, so clearly we're, you know, we're, we're looking at this, this Blandon program and broad, broadband as well. So I wanted to bring it to the commission tonight, just for information, if you've got some, some questions, we can talk about those. But if you're generally supportive of us proceeding, probably under the umbrella of the EDA between now and May 31st for the preparation of an application, if you're willing to support that, I would work with Sam to put together kind of a letter representing that the planning commission talked about this, they support it, and they would encourage us to, to continue to move forward with it. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good program, it's been a successful program, and I think it's probably something we, we should take a close look at.
Well, I think it's a no-brainer, I'd make a motion that the planning commission support the application.
I'll second it. Is that a one-time possible 75,000?
Yeah, it's over the two-year period, so yes, unless, you know, the city of Red Wing's been involved with this in the past. And, and Blandon has, over the course of the years, had different programs beyond this one that were, you were allowed to compete or request additional dollars. And beyond Blandon, there would be other dollars too, but this right now would be a two-year deal.
What kind of a figure is it then to get, to get this up and running?
Primarily time at this point, there's two, two stages in this process. One is after May 31st, an application, or by May 31st, an application will go in. If we're one of four communities selected, and we're not sure how many other communities will seek funding right now or approval, but if we're one of the four that's approved, then later this summer, the two-year program actually starts. But between now, May 31st, there's no dollar requirement for us to invest, it's, it's time and effort. And I'm out and about talking to, to different folks in the community, gathering similar support letters and, and feedback from, from them, so it's time right now, Mike.
Yeah, I guess what I'm primarily asking is, what is the price tag on such a facility, such a...
You're talking about a data set...
Overall, how much money is this going to cost overall?
Oh, overall, depends, there's, there's up to $75,000 of grant assistance for the approved community or communities. And depending on what the application is for, they typically have made, Blandon has made a one-to-one match requirement for hardware, so if, if someone wanted to buy 40 computers, that that was their, their broadband need that rose to the top. Computer hardware, that type of thing is a one-to-one. If it's, if it's other programming sorts of things, it's, it's a three-to-one. $3, Blandon, $1 either in-kind or cash by the local unit of government. So there is some match, but it's not, you know, it's not dollar for dollar unless it's equipment. And I think we're beyond, for the most part, probably the equipment side of it.
So then, there'd be a program where if you wanted to advertise on the broadband, that you'd be charged a certain amount of money, like...
Well, you, you could, I mean, what's going to happen in this program, Mike, is there's going to, there's going to be input from lots of different folks in town. And they're going to have to sort through, it's almost a facilitation, strategic planning process where with the aid of the Blandon folks, the community talks about, here's all our needs, here's our 30 needs related to broadband. We're not going to do 30 projects, because there's, well, maybe we will, but there's probably not money to do 30. So we've got to prioritize these things and they're going to rise up to the top and maybe it's going to be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, I don't know, we don't, we don't know, that's the process. But once the process has developed those priorities, then you attach numbers, dollar numbers to them and say, okay, if we're going to attempt to resolve our number one priority, it's this work, this scope of services, and this much money.
Okay.
And of this much money, maybe $3 and $1 is our match here for, from a local perspective, or if it's equipment, it's one-for-one. But we don't know what they are yet. And I just know, because I hear, and I'm sure you do in your own circles, there are so many applications that tie to broadband, it's going to, if we go ahead with this, it's going to be real curious to me to find out what really are the most...
Nice to have hotspots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Then you can find out everything in the area.
Right.
It's like we do with the phones already.
Also too, just for informational purposes, I mean, obviously I'm talking to the school district on this too, and we'll see, but one of the issues that has to be resolved between now and May 31st is a, is a, a community, what's a community? Well, obviously the city of Cannon Falls is a community, but so is the school district. And I think probably we'll see reasons to, to work with the school district to propose a community that's larger than just the corporate limits of, of the city, with regards to broadband. I, I, I think that's going to probably make sense. I don't know that it would extend much beyond that, but that's probably where this conversation seems to be heading now. There's a lot of reasons, you know, for that, but it probably wouldn't be just limited to the city of Cannon Falls in terms of the planning and the...
Commerce as well as the school.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I made the motion, Mike, who's seconding, isn't it?
Motion by Mr. Altough, a second by Mr. Hemma, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We support it.
Thank you.
That brings us to number eight, which would be Planning Commission member comments. Anyone have anything?
Is there a reason for the delay on the winery, uh, public hearing?
They have asked for a postponement of all public hearings until further notice.
Until what?
Until further notice.
Oh.
So does that mean that the special...
The special meeting that we had scheduled is canceled, that's not happening.
Okay.
Um, they have asked that we do not hold any public hearings until they give us the go-ahead that they are ready.
Sure.
Any idea when that might be?
Your guess is as good as mine.
Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Hearing nothing, that brings us to number nine, which is adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by G Lundell and a second by D Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.